Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the February 22 meeting of your Aiken City Council. Want to quickly go over our guidelines for tonight. All of our meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is expected. During public hearing, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and I will recognize you. You'll please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow the opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. Now that we got all that business out of the way, right? I would like to at this time ask Reverend Charles Matthews to come forward. He's a youth minister, am I correct?
Correct.
At Second Baptist, and we appreciate you being here with us today. If you'll rise, he's going to lead us in our invocation.
The mayor, elected officials, and citizens, good evening. It is indeed an honor for me to stand before you tonight and lead you all in prayer. Let us pray. God, we just want to say thank you for this glorious day. We thank you, God, for the many blessings that you stored upon us as we traveled through this day. We thank you, God, for gathering us here tonight to conduct business pertaining to the city of Aiken. And God, as you already know, that there are times as electoral officials, there's decisions that have to be made that is unpopular. We ask that you guide us, leaders, as well as let us understand that sometimes when tough decisions need to be made, it need to be made in love, it need to be made with mercy, kindness, but not only that, God, it need to be made for all people, for the whole general population. And God, we ask that you bless each and every one of us here that hears tonight under the sound of my voice. Ask that you continue to guide the city officials and as citizen of this great city, help us to understand that we are all working together for one common cause. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson if you will to come forward. He's going to lead us in our pledge. Veteran, we appreciate your service and appreciate you being with us today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Appreciate you being with us tonight. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda. I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tim to make the motion to approve the agenda. Mayor Pro Tim Edner?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as issued in the minutes.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Raise your right hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. The minutes were distributed to council earlier. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? This is a consideration of the minutes for the executive session and regular meeting on February 8, 2016. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
I.
Motion and a second. Are you good? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. For presentations tonight, I'm going to ask Councilman Hamoki to please read a presentation that we have.
Proclamation. Whereas the United States Congress authorized the Defense Secretary to conduct a program commemorating the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, and whereas a part of that program is the encouragement, facilitation, and support of local and state events by governments, individuals, and organizations, and whereas the Henry Milton Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is a commemorative partner of the Vietnam War 50th anniversary, and whereas the Henry Middleton Chapter of the DAR is planning an event on March 29, which marks the day that the last U.S. troops left Vietnam to recognize veterans, POWs, and MIA's and the families of the Vietnam veterans, and whereas this commemoration is an opportunity for all Americans to recognize, honor, and thank our Vietnam veterans and their families for their service and sacrifices during one of America's longest wars, and whereas March 29, 2016 has been designated as a day to express our tremendous gratitude and support to this generation of Americans through ceremonies across the nation, now therefore the mayor and council of the city of Aiken do hereby proclaim March 29, 2016 as a day for commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War and encourage all residents to extend heartfelt appreciation to our Vietnam veterans and their families for their service and sacrifices done this 22nd day of February 2016. Signed by the mayor and the council.
Thank you, Councilman Hamoki, and thank you for your service during this time also. We're going to make a presentation, but before we do, I'm going to entertain a motion. This is a presentation request from the Daughters of the American Revolution Henry Milton Chapter to place yellow ribbons on the South Boundary Oaks to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. Is there a motion?
So move.
There a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor? And of course, that's unanimous. And I'm going to ask Councilman Hamoki, if you will, let's go down there. I think we have a presentation. And we're presenting this possibly to Mrs. Hamoki, is that correct? Who represents the chapter?
Oh, the chapter president.
Oh, the chapter here? Please, please come down. That's great. Thank you. We appreciate each of you being with us. What great project this is. Our city were happy to support it. Thank you so much for all your efforts. Especially you veterans and all of those other citizens. Thank you for this.
Thank you. You serve in Vietnam either stateside or orders, complete your duty in time, or on boots on the ground in Vietnam, would you finish that?
Next on the agenda, we have a presentation to council from Mr. Ron Delamora, and this is going to be a request to place banners in the downtown area for Earth Day. So excuse Mr. Delamora here. Ron, it's good to see you. Come on up and let us know a little bit about the project you're proposing.
I'm Delamora, and I live at 142 Holly Ridge Road. I serve as the chairman of the Energy and Environmental Committee. I think you all know that on April 23, we'll be having our second annual Earth Day event out here on Newberry Street Festival Center. It'll be from about 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We've got quite a promotional publicity program to support the event. We've got our own website, earthyaken.org. It'll be supported by the city website with a link directly to the organization. We recently made an arrangement with Beasley Broadcast Media Firm. They will be putting on literally hundreds of 32nd announcements on the Earth Day event for the two weeks preceding the Earth Day event. We will have several feature articles in the Aiken Standard. Virtually every magazine in town is putting a feature article on Earth Day event, April 23. So we've got it pretty well covered. But ask, my purpose tonight is to ask council for approval to put five banners in the downtown area. Those banners would be two feet by eight feet. They would be placed on what I would call the arm installations at the various intersections downtown. The banners would read "Earth Day Aiken" or "Earth Day 4/23/16." And that is my request, that we have those five banners approved. Not only will they attract or inform the citizens of what's going on on the 23rd, but with all the visitors coming through the intersections that we have in mind, we should gain some heads and beds from that as well. So that's our request.
Ron, thank you very much for that effort. I'm sure all of council will agree with that. This is a great project, certainly an awareness for our city, and I know our young people have certainly gotten behind this as well, so we look forward to this day. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have something, not on Earth Day, but my brother said he's going to kill me if I try to introduce him. He's a former mayor of South Brunswick, New Jersey, and he's down here looking for a place to go golfing.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, why don't you invite him to Woodside?
It's close today. It's close to him.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion is made to approve the request of the committee that Mr. Delarama represent.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Price?
Second.
There's a second? Any discussion from council?
I just want to say that last year was a huge event. You grew it well, and looking forward to this year, hope the weather's better.
Well, thank you very much for saying that. We have a great team, and we had great support from the city. Thank you very much.
And I'll offer as a general statement, not specific to this project, although you all are doing a great job in advancing this very well, but I like this idea of the banners, using the banners to let folks in Aiken know what's going on. There's a certain amount of excitement, enthusiasm, sort of just general excitement that comes with it. So I think it's a good use to promote the Earth Day event. I think things like this could be done a little more often, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
To restate the motion, this is a consideration for permission to place five banners in the downtown area promoting the Energy and Environmental Committee's Earth Day activities. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Raise your hand. And of course, that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to old business, section three of our agenda. First on is the first reading of an ordinance to repeal ordinance 05112015, which adopted the hospitality tax. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a comment before motion, I appreciate it. This item is on the agenda at my request for a variety of reasons. I think anybody in the room who has followed the hospitality tax pretty well knows the issue. I hope we don't, while they have the right to come up and speak, I think we all know what side everybody's on. I just want to say how much I appreciate the tone of the discussion. I've received emails over the weekend from people who I know are vehemently opposed and to the repeal, and from those who support the repeal. It's typical of Aiken. It's been with manners, with no bad comments. We have agreed to disagree without being disagreeable, and I appreciate that. I sent many people a lengthy response as to why I support the repeal. And beyond that, I would move that we pass first reading of an ordinance to repeal ordinance 05112015, which adopted the hospitality tax.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second? We're going to at this time open it up for comments of the floor. I just want to restate for everyone's purposes, and I appreciated Councilman Duarte's comments. All comments on this issue should be directed to me, the chair of this meeting. There should be no personalities involved. All comments should be addressing to the issue. Anything other than that will be deemed inappropriate and out of order. This is how our democracy and how this council works, and I know you feel the same way. So I'm going to say it's going to be somewhat of a controlled speech. I want everyone to have their right and their say, certainly. If we start hearing the same thing three and four times, we're going to move forward. So with that, I open up the floor for comment. Just stay, if you don't mind, state your name and address.
My name is Nicholas Ruttson. I live at 216 Box Elder Drive, Aiken. I start this comment by saying that one-sixth of the U.S. population moves every year, and having come from different parts of the world and spending their career in the Army, the first two agenda items affected me personally. I was in the military, was not in Vietnam, but was in the served during that time. And Earth Day started in my home state of Wisconsin, so there's a connection to everything we do. I came here, and one of the first things I got involved with was voting in the referendum to support the schools of this city. It's an investment in the future, and the city residents spoke by voting to pay for that school growth and protection through the hospitality tax. I think revoking by council action, something that was done by referendum of the people, would be going against the public who has spoken and who have spoken in a democratic manner. So with that, I'll sit down. Schools are most investment, the best investment in a city's future. Modernizing the downtown and taking care of the horse park is one thing, but if you don't have students and who are educated, you don't have a city left.
Yes, sir. I would just, yeah, that's fine. I would just say this isn't actually the school tax that we're talking about, it's the hospitality tax, which is a different local penny. This says, our action tonight will have no effect on the school tax you're talking about. This did not go on a referendum.
Okay, then I apologize.
No, no, you don't have to. Listen, there's a lot of local pennies, and it's, I imagine what you just said clarified things for a lot of people watching on TV too, so I appreciate that.
Then I will continue to say that I support a tax that helps run the city, and this is one that should stay there.
Point well taken. Thank you for speaking to us tonight.
Good evening. Nick Rudacil, 145 Red Cedar Road, and most affectionately known to many of you as Cindy's Sweet Shop. Over the past few weeks, we've attended the city initiative meetings that Rick has put on, the Main Street Initiative meetings, and it seems to me that the hospitality tax ultimately dovetails with those. From what I've been told, 60% of all the hospitality tax revenue has been generated from residents outside of the city of Aiken. In December, the city and the ADDA worked together to advertise in Augusta, which is outside of the media range that ADDA is, uses its funds to advertise in, which are a 50-mile radius. The results of that were very positive to the merchants in downtown Aiken. The common, common comment that we hear continuously in downtown is that people don't come downtown because of lack of parking, and it again seems like the hospitality tax, the city initiative, the Main Street initiative, all dovetail together to become the jettison to fix these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rudz. I appreciate your comments.
I'm Thurman Watley, 757 Palm Drive, Aiken, and I'm appearing tonight on behalf of the Aiken Community Playhouse Board of Directors, where I'm the executive director of a 19-member board. The board has taken a supportive vote for the hospitality tax and is behind it, and would ask the council to continue it. One, on the grounds that it's doing a great job of providing funds with very little pain, I think, to a lot of people that will be well-used to maintain city buildings, and of course, my main heartthrob, the AECOM Center for the Performing Arts, home of the Aiken Community Playhouse. So I commend the council for its forward-thinking and coming up with a way to generate funds without dumping it on the property owners immediately. So this seems like a great way to raise money without inflicting too much pain on the locals and sucking some money out of the visitors. If we can get more visitors here, we should be able to suck more money out of their pockets to help build Aiken. So I think that was very forward-thinking on the council's part. Finally, I've talked with a couple of other directors of area arts organizations. They have not noticed any decline in their before-event patrons saying, "Hold our tickets. We're at dinner, and we're running a little late, so please, hold our tickets. We want to not lose them for the show." So it hasn't hurt from that aspect. We think it's a strong idea, and we, as the Aiken Community Playhouse Board, urge the council to continue with the hospitality tax. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Watley. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I would, if I can, I'd like to respond to Thurman. Great comments about the arts, and if you'll check Columbia, Columbia has a 2% tax, and not that I'm trying to plant any seed, we still try to keep the 1% tax, but 1%, 1% of 2% goes towards the arts. Right? So keep that in mind. That's another century. For Aiken.
Other comments? Yes, ma'am. We'll get, I'll get you.
My name is Barbara Stafford. I live at 1310 Colleton Avenue. I have a couple problems with the hospitality tax, or a few maybe. Initially, I felt like it was just rammed down the throats of the citizens. We never had a chance to vote on it. We were told initially that it was to build a parking garage, then that all went away. Then jump forward to the last few days, $780,000, and you don't have a plan of specifically where it's going to be spent. There should have been a plan initially, and I, you know, I don't mind paying a little bit here and there, but I want to know what I'm paying for. So that's the way I feel. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Stafford. Appreciate your comments.
My name is Terry Sullivan. I live at 44 Kimwood Court. A quick point I'd like to make is we did have a referendum on this, and that was in November. We had two very qualified candidates who ran for the mayor's office, and they had two very different opinions on what to do about the hospitality tax. One of them thought it was a good tax. Well, excuse me, as a taxpayer, there's no such thing as a good tax. There are necessary taxes for the core functions of government, and that's it. Any other tax is not a good tax. And then there was one who ran on repealing the hospitality tax, and I fully support that. I do not believe it's a good tax, and it's not a necessary tax either. And the referendum was in that election, the one who ran on repealing the hospitality tax won by a large margin. That, to me, was a mandate from the voters whom you all represent, that they do not want this tax to stay in place, especially considering, as the lady before me said, there is no plan for what to do with this windfall of money. So I would respectfully ask all of you, you go to your voters and ask them, put up a referendum if you want to, but I think you had a referendum in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Bart, I saw your hand.
Bart Blackwell, Sixth Round Hill Court in Aiken. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Nice to see you folks again. As you know, I'm the immediate past chair of the Aiken Chamber of Commerce's Board of Directors, and last year as chairman, my board voted unanimously to support the hospitality tax because we felt it was a good, fair, reasonable source of funding for economic vitality projects and initiatives that would benefit and enhance our community and benefit all of our citizens. Our support didn't indicate that we liked taxes. Personally, I feel that as a small business owner, as a small manufacturer, I pay far too much in personal income and property tax, but the board viewed the hospitality tax as an important investment in our community, an opportunity for our citizens and our visitors to invest in specific projects designed to enhance our economic well-being, and I believe our overall quality of life. As you know, our state legislature authorized the adoption of the hospitality tax nearly 20 years ago, and virtually every significant municipality in the state of South Carolina has a hospitality tax, many of them at the 2% level. Charleston, Columbia, Greenville, all 2%.
Yes.
And as we heard from our friends in Greenville during our aspirational cities tour last fall, the hospitality tax has provided a fuel for Greenville's tremendous economic renaissance and revitalization of their downtown district. Greenville's success is impressive. The hospitality tax has been a big part of that success. After seven months, we know the argument that the tax may hurt business is false. Revenues have exceeded expectations. Some have argued that the tax, a penny on every dollar, a dollar on every hundred spent, may pose a financial hardship. That's hard for me to imagine, but if it's true, please remember this tax can be avoided. The only apparent reason, as I see, to vote to repeal this tax is because philosophically you're opposed to taxes. A vote to repeal is based on pure ideology. I get it. That's commendable, but ideology doesn't invest to enhance our community, it doesn't attract visitors, and ideology doesn't grow our economy. It can't provide for needed facility improvements to Smith Hazel or Odell Weeks, and it can't do the types of things that Aiken needs done now. I urge you to stand by your decision of less than a year ago, give this investment program an opportunity, and vote no on this motion to repeal. Thank you.
Mr. Blackwell, I would only point out that it's more than ideological to oppose a tax that some of us feel are not fair. My comment in the beginning was we didn't even look in the budget to see if we could get that 1.2 million, and we're still not looking at the budget to see if we can get that 1.2 million. So it's more than ideology. I guess you could say it's ideology in the sense that there, as one of the speakers said, there's no such thing as a good tax. I'm not sure that I agree with that, but I would in this case, but I appreciate your comments, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, that's the second time that good has been mentioned, and I'm trying to decide whether I should take the high road and ignore it or move forward. It is a good tax, and I stand by that. Five years from now, you'll look back on it and said, and say to yourselves, "This is a good tax," and I'll move on.
Other comments? Charlie?
Mayor, council?
My name is Charlie Harts. I live at one-seventy-five Adamsville Spring Road in North Augusta. I do, however, own two businesses here in Aiken, the Dunkin' Donuts. I do support the hospitality tax. I do not enjoy charging it to my customers, and I certainly don't enjoy forwarding it to the city. Having said that, I believe it's important that the city look forward and be proactive in managing our future rather than react. I have thousands of customers every week visit my two stores, and I have had zero negative, zero comments, positive or negative, about the one percent hospitality tax. So, I too, even though I don't have a business downtown and I don't live downtown, think that we need more parking. It was obvious by getting here tonight and having to walk two blocks to attend this meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Fran.
Mayor Osborne, council members. My name is Fran Jones, and I live at thirty-fifty-seven Grayland Lake Drive. And to Mr. Thurman's point, I'm one of those people you're sucking taxes out of. My husband and I enjoy dinner downtown at least three times a week. We just had dinner this evening. But I'm here in another capacity. I wanted to let you know that our Greater Aiken Chamber of Commerce, that I'm the chair of this year, continues to support the hospitality tax unanimously. And I'm also here as plant manager of one of the major employers here in Aiken County. As you guys may know, I'm the plant manager for Bridgestone's Passenger and Light Truck Tire Plant, where we make a million tires a month, and I employ fifteen-hundred people in my facility. And I was part of the group that came here in 2011 to start a new plant that was across the street that currently employs about five hundred. So collectively, Bridgestone employs about two thousand employees and bring good jobs here to the people in Aiken County. In my humble opinion, that wouldn't have happened had there not been some funds available for economic vitality in Aiken County as well as in the city. And I do not want this city to become like the city I grew up in, where there are no stores, because the county and the city do not work together to draw any type of retail, any type of restaurants. There's no support. So, it's a little town that's dried up and has nothing. I've chosen to live here. I'm not a native of Aiken, but my husband and I love Aiken, and we live here, and we enjoy it. And I want to continue to see it grow. So, I want you to know that myself, as well as the member of the chamber, as well as the people that work in my organization, that we support the hospitality tax, and we would ask that you vote against repealing this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I want to hear two more from the floor at this point. Let's see. As I say, that hands go up all over the place. Stephen.
My name is Stephen Mueller, and I live at two-twenty-one Greenville Street here in downtown Aiken. And I sincerely believe that all council members, when they made this previous vote for the hospitality tax, deeply believed that they were doing what's best for the community, and for that, I appreciate it. I spoke in this chamber during that previous consideration, and it asked council if they would please pause the vote so that we could have more input, so that it could be more inclusive and less divisive. I believe unnecessarily divisive. The tax brings, whether or not you want the tax or not, the way that it's been approached brings quite a bit of resentment in a number of different ways. One, the way that it's written in the code stating what a tourist is, is just not a common-sense, easy-to-understand approach. Three miles down the road is the end of the city, and on the other side of that, for the purposes of this tax, is considered a tourist. Now, when we really want economic development, and we're bringing in tourists from outside the area, I'm on the accommodations tax committee, and we're trying to attract people from fifty miles outside of the city. Another idea was the idea that the majority of the tax is paid by people outside of the boundaries. Maybe that can't be substantiated, but I don't believe that it can be true. In the South Carolina code, it says exclusively that the revenues are used for eight specific purposes, and all the discussion always about the taxes don't address those eight specific purposes. One of them deals with beaches, and the other seven deals with tourism, real tourism, economic development. Tourism is economic development. The largest industry in South Carolina is tourism, eighteen billion dollars, and surely we could easily get our part of it. And then the other aspect that's potentially resentful is in the past, when the council had voted to repeal the tax if the citizens were to accept the tax. So, that's not often seen, that we're, some feel like we're double taxed again. And the idea that we spend monies on chains, fast-food chains, as an aspect of economic development, that people from outside the area, in Greenville and Raleigh and all these places, are going to come to Aiken, is sort of misleading. There's more things we could do in there. So, I'm here again tonight to ask you to consider this vote, not as a vote for yes or no against the hospitality tax, but yes or no, whether to pause this and re-approach the entire discussion of how to use this economic development so that it's not divisive to the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. One, one more right here.
My name is Tom Dean. I've lived in Aiken about twenty-five years. I live at three-twelve Curicome Drive in Aiken. I'm here to speak for the referendum to repeal the hospitality tax. I think it's an indication of arrogance on a, on a part of city council, that they know and are wiser in how to spend this money than the people who earn it, in the business community. And I would not only support repealing the tax, but I would also suggest refunding the money that's already been collected back to the people who paid for it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. We're going to close, we're going to close comment this time. I think, I think everybody gets the gist of, of what the issue is on that point. I'm going to open up comments. I'm sure everybody on council would like an opportunity to at least address their stance on that. If, if anyone would like, I'll open it up for comment from council at this time.
Well, let me address the gentleman's comment that just spoke, Mr. Bean. If we start refunding, let me just tell you how the tax money has been spent. And let me also state that we've been very transparent on how we've spent the hospitality tax funds. Every decision that has been made in terms of how the tax should be spent have come before the full city council. And I don't know of one council member that has voted against spending not one dime that we've spent already. That being said, we needed infrastructure improvement on the south side of town, where Starbucks is and TD Banks. We didn't have the money budgeted, but we had hospitality tax money. Came before city council. City council approved it. Starbucks is there, and the improvements with TD Banks. We had a chance to get two million dollars for the airport. We need to put up a hundred and twenty thousand dollars matching funds to get the two million dollars. We managed to have money, hospitality tax. We got two million dollars for the airport. How do we get, how do we give that money back? We needed a business vitality manager. We didn't have that budgeted. We hired a business vitality manager. And I could go, I could name several other things that we've spent the monies on, improvements in terms of the appearance of our, our cities. And we have other uses that's planned for the money, that deals with tourism and attracting people to our town. I say again that this is a good tax, but I also want to say that we had the opportunity, a number of us, to participate in the aspirational tour, where we visit various cities, a number of cities, and they've been creative in terms of how they've managed to preserve their charm, but grow their city. And certainly, we, we came back very excited from that tour. Then we managed to bring in Main Street, and then we had about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty people to come into our chambers here downstairs and share their ideas of what they wanted our city to look like for the next twenty, thirty years. What they came up with in terms of visionary planning, and along with the city's vision, you can't get it for free. It is going to cost some money. And you might say, "Well, cut your budget." What do we cut out? Do we tell public safety, "We're going to cut your budget by half a million dollars"? So, those, those are the things that we're, we are, we are looking at. But we have a great city. We want to preserve this city, but we also want to be visionaries as well. We have a huge infrastructure problem in our town, and it is going to cost millions, millions of dollars. We can start planning now or wait for something to happen, like a Flint, Michigan. And do we want that? Not trying to give scare tactics, but you have to plan in advance for these things. We want this city to be something that we can all be proud of, but also for our children and our grandchildren. And I'll turn it over to others to make comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price.
One other thing, though, but, Mr. Mayor, North Augusta has a tax, New Ellington has a tax, Johnston has a tax, and Aiken will have a tax. I'll leave it at that.
Any other comments from council?
Yeah, I, I would just say, looking at history, if you ask most of us which is more important, passing of the capital project sales tax or the hospitality tax, the answer will be obvious, although there are many that don't see a relationship between the two. But I am told, and Councilmember Price, you were on council at the time, I am told that to get the first round of capital projects passed, there was a promise to repeal the hospitality tax. And when that first round was passed, in fact, the hospitality tax was repealed. We may find ourselves in the same situation. I agree, the infrastructure demands on the city are extraordinary. I don't know where we're going to get the money. It is, the city manager has given us a pamphlet and talked about the useful life, and I passed a lot of that information on in my emails over the weekend. But nonetheless, one of the reasons that I supported repeal was the concern that I have that it will adversely affect passage of the, of the fourth round of capital project sales tax will be voted on in twenty-eighteen. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. But clearly, CPST four is far more important than a hospitality tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dwar. Any other comments from council?
Well, I just want to say, Mr. Thurman referred to, you know, sixty percent or more, the money comes from tourists. I don't want to give the impression that we're sitting here waiting to soak the tourists, whether it's ten percent, twenty percent, or ninety percent of people inside or outside the city. I think the virtue of this tax stands on its own. It, you know, it doesn't really depend on where we get the money. I think it's very important that we have the money to relieve the pressure on our general budget. If you really want to get involved, come to some of our budget sessions. We are really tight, and we're doing just about everything, and Dick will guarantee this, we're doing backflips trying to keep from, trying to raise property taxes. We're right now using general, or we used to use general fund money for some of the functions that the hospitality tax pays for today. So, that relieves the pressure on the budget itself, and that's why I'm going to vote against the repeal, to maintain.
Any, any other comments?
I'll make, very briefly, I want to echo the words of Bart Blackwell, simply make reference to that because he said it better than I think I could do it. So, I want to thank you, Bart, for your comments. I also want to say, you know, my time horizon, when I look, when I think about this town and, and think about our future, my time horizon is not just, you know, this week, today, or this week, or this month, and it's not just the next thirty or forty years that I might still be living here. You know, I think about my children and my grandchildren. I'm thinking about a forty, fifty, sixty-year time horizon, and, and so everything, as I make decisions on this council, as I raise my hand to vote in favor of or opposition to other things, I'm thinking about the long term, the long haul. And I'm, I'm as unhappy about paying taxes as anybody, but also unhappy about not planning and preparing for our future, and for my children, and your children, and everybody's grandchildren. I think that it would be reckless and irresponsible of me, as a parent, as a father, or as a businessman, not to prepare for, for the future of myself, my family, and my business. And I think it's also the same kind of responsibility I have for the city to help think about and prepare for our future. And that means a healthy, vital, vibrant economic environment. That's what has made us the success we are today. I remember when we weren't. But that's what's made us the success that we are today, and that's the only way that we're going to be a success tomorrow, and provide these same wonderful benefits that Aiken gives all of us now, provide that to our children and our grandchildren. I'm looking, not just today, not just tomorrow, but thirty years, forty years, fifty years ahead, and so I will absolutely support this anytime it comes up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mary.
Yes, a couple of comments. I think the, several people talked about ideology of it, and I'll give you my side of ideology. Several comments were made about how it was brought about and voted on. I don't think that the citizens had an appropriate time to look into it. The other part of it is, we haven't accounted for all of it in the budget. There was seven hundred thousand dollars that wasn't itemized in the budget. And then I think that is an issue. If council supports it this way, then we ought to support with appropriate division of the money so that all the citizens know. It is true that we put in there that everything had to be brought to council. Yours truly was one that promoted that, so nothing would get out of hand. But I think when the budget comes up again, we ought to look at having all of the money accounted for in the budget, and I think Mr. Clem is working towards that. So, that's my ideology for it, that it should have been done right the first time.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one more quick comment?
Certainly.
Just as, thank you for your comments, Mr. Edner. Just as a, as a note, you know, as it was originally proposed, there was some specifics about how it was to be used, and there still is. The nature, and maybe Mr. Williams from the EDP could explain this better than I could because he's certainly more experienced, but the nature of economic development dollars is that, is that sometimes you need the flexibility. You don't know what you're, what you're going to need or when you're going to need it. That's why there was a enterprise capital reserve fund as one of the components of the proposal. Not only that, but because of the requirement within the establishing ordinance for this tax, there was essentially a prohibition against going ahead and spelling out that it was going to be spent on. Everything had to come up as they happened, when it happened, to be voted on independently and separately. That's why the items that were laid out in the original proposal really didn't make it very far. But, but I, I believe that, you know, that, that to be a true economic development program, you're always going to need that flexibility to be able to advance the, the goals of the city for those things that may come before us.
I appreciate your comments, but just to have seven hundred thousand dollars as a line item, I think it could have very easily been divided into the eight segments of that, so the citizens would have a better idea of where it's going. It is coming to city council for approval, and that was almost a fight to get that in there. But I think when the new budget comes, we ought to take a look at it, and we, we have enough items that we can account for that money.
Councilwoman Diggs, you had a comment?
I was just saying that I agree with what Lesley said, being proactive rather than reactive, and the vision for the future. I have a grandchild here. I have a son and daughter-in-law, a son, excuse me, son-in-law and daughter that I have a son and daughter-in-law, a son, excuse me, son-in-law and daughter that just moved here and hope to have more grandchildren in the future. And I think about what we have here in Aiken, and I'd like to see us have the monies to do some of the things that we are interested in doing, having another source of revenue. It's already exceeded our expectations as far as what we anticipated collecting. I've heard enough, and I'm ready to vote in support of keeping it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One final comment. This is not about economic development. I support using public money for economic development. This is an issue of the taxation and how we get that money. And as I said earlier, I thought we could have made a better effort to look in the budget. We had a $40 million budget. We wanted 1.2 million about, it was not a large amount of money that we needed. It occurred very late in the budget process, and that's why it seemed so hurried. But please don't say that, think that those of us who don't like the hospitality tax are not willing to support economic development. I do use, I do support the use of public money for economic development, and I hope this council will be doing more of that in the next year, in the next budget year. We're not going to grow without spending money for economic development. I just don't agree that it had to be the hospitality tax at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Duarte.
I'd like a few comments, if I could take the pleasure. The first concern I had with the hospitality tax was the effect it would have on the businesses. I was very concerned that it would hurt our restaurants. I think, I want to take it that it speaks to the quality of our restaurants, but clearly by the amount of money, I'm glad I was wrong on that because they certainly have done well with it. And I'm glad because I certainly didn't want those businesses to be hurt, to prove any point that I had. My second biggest concern was the CPST, the capital project sales tax that the county promotes. I was on the county council when we promoted the first CPST. I went to the Kiwanis Clubs, and I spoke in favor of it and asked people if they would vote, we would make a commitment for it. It was not an easy sell that first year, but the second year, people saw that we did what, the contract that they voted on on the ballot, that we held up our end of it, and it passed with a larger margin, and I was very happy to see that. One of the main concerns I had in passing the hospitality tax was I was afraid it might jeopardize the CPST, which is close to $5 million a year for the city, and not to mention what it does to offset keeping our county mileage down as well. I really hoped that we'd be addressing this, quite honestly, at the budget process. I thought it would be a time when we could put the due diligence in to look at that. But as we were moving through this process, and Councilman Duarte was right in this, we need to give our staff, Amanda Mylaf, an opportunity to prepare a budget for us, and it really wouldn't be fair to wait for a June 30 budget to do it at that point. So I understand that. So we are here now considering this. It doesn't take a mathematician to know what the votes are on this. I just say, as a council, I look forward to moving forward. One thing I would ask is, and it's always been an issue with me, and I've talked to our city manager, that I would like to see the position funded and out of this sales tax moved over to our general fund with our other positions when we find money in the budget. I think that's something that we can do in the budget process. There are just certain things that need to be done in a different way. I certainly support the position. Have nothing against an economic vitality fund either. I think it's something that we can use. I'd hope that we'd have an opportunity to work through the budget to find some other monies, but we're here. I look forward, after this vote, working with council and moving forward for the betterment of our city. So with that...
Mr. Mayor, if I might add, clarify something here. I've used consistently the term "good tax." And the reason that I use the word "good" is because it's a tax that can be used for great use. And I think we'll see that, having five children, five sons, raised five sons, I'm probably the one, one of the ones in this room that does not relish every time I go to the store and buy something paying taxes. But I recognize, because of some prior decisions that's taken place on this council, what I believe, not anybody else, but this is Lesley's personal belief, what is visionary planning and good for this town, and I will always do what is good for the future of this town. So that is why I use the term "a good tax for great use." Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. This is first reading of an ordinance to repeal ordinance 05112015, which adopted the hospitality tax. An affirmative vote is to repeal the hospitality tax. All those in favor, raise your hand. Councilman Duarte, Councilman Ebner, and the mayor vote for. All those opposed? Councilman Mary, Councilwoman Price, Councilman Hamoki, Councilwoman Diggs, and the motion fails.
And I would assume that the gates to read, the second reading?
That's correct.
Yeah.
We're going to take a five-minute recess at this time. If council wouldn't mind, we have an issue that we have people here who need to travel, so we're going to try to move it forward if it's all right. Is it, do I have a motion to suspend the rules for this one so we could consider it?
Go move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second?
We need to ask the city attorney if we can do that.
You can change the order of the agenda.
By majority or two-thirds? I think it's two-thirds vote, is it not? A minimum of two-thirds?
Maybe everybody will vote for it.
Did you get a second? Because if not, I'll offer a second.
I support what we're doing. I just want to be sure we do it properly.
Okay, we're actually making the motion to suspend our rules so that we can consider number three and our new business.
If it's unanimous, it won't make any difference.
If I made, the two-thirds vote for emergency, an emergency type of situation, it's okay to move things around on the agenda.
Okay, very good.
All in favor of considering this at this time? Very good. Thank you. We're moving to new business at this time, number three. This is first reading of an ordinance to rezon property at 449 Rutland Drive, the site of Aiken High School, from residential, single-family, and planned institutional, and approve a concept plan. Is there a motion?
I shall move.
We have a motion and a second. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, the Aiken County Public School District is requesting the rezoning of the site of Aiken High School located at 449 Rutland Drive, from residential, single-family, RS-10 to plan institutional. The request is to rezone the 49.67 acre site for the redevelopment of Aiken High School. The planned institutional zone provides locations for schools, churches, and other institutional uses. The planned institutional zone requires a concept plan approved by the city council after planning commission review, which may address site layout, building design, tree protection, and buffers, and other issues to assure compatibility with surrounding uses. The planning commission reviewed the rezoning request and the concept plan for the redevelopment of Aiken High School at their nine February 2016 meeting. After review, the planning commission unanimously recommended the rezoning request to plan institutional and approval of the concept plan for the redevelopment of Aiken High School. For city council consideration, this first reading of an ordinance to rezone 49.67 acres located at 449 Rutland Drive, the site of the Aiken High School, from residential, single-family to plan institutional, and to approve the concept plan for the redevelopment of the school. Mr. Mayor, we do have distinguished members of our school board and other staff present to answer any questions that you may have.
Would a representative for the petitioners care to come and make a comment to council
I'm Tilden Hildebrand with Hassan Hildebrand here in Aiken. I have with me Alan Taylor with LS3P Architects. Also have Kevin Chipman with Facilities Construction with the school district, and Tad Barber with Aiken County School Board. Certainly, we would entertain any questions that you have. The rezoning is, was done basically at the request of the planning department so that the zoning would better accommodate the use on the site. The planning department has requested that at some point in time, all the schools in the city of Aiken be rezoned to planned institutional, and it is the plan of the school district at the time when those sites are renovated or improved to request rezoning of the other sites. Planned institutional accommodates fencing, planting, certain aspects that residential zoning does not accommodate.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. When will construction start?
It's scheduled to start this spring.
Okay.
We're looking to have bids out in probably the March timeframe, so the Phase 2A should be happening in April, May timeframe of this year. And some demolition is already...
What is the city's involvement in the process as the facilities are being constructed or modified?
We go through the normal site plan review process. The school district is governed by the Office of School Facilities in Columbia. However, they still adhere to all the local zoning requirements, so we go through the normal site and landscape plan review.
So our staff will be on site and inspecting and so forth?
That's correct, and they've already reviewed and commented, and we've revised the concept plan that you have in your package based on their comments.
And you're satisfied that we have the capability of doing that without adversely impacting the construction?
You do. And we've done, we've gone through that process a number of times with a number of schools in the city.
That's all I have. Thank you.
When will construction be completed? Or when do you anticipate it being completed?
The Phase 2A portion of the construction would be completed at the end of 2017, kind of the fall, fall to winter timeframe for that first phase.
Will that include a new football stadium eventually?
The Phase 2A includes primarily classroom buildings. It will attach to the first building that was done a couple of years ago, the new science building. It will be predominantly classroom buildings, a media center, cafeteria, as well as a new administration building in the first phase.
Any other questions from council?
Yes, and I think we've got the same piece of property mine. At one time, for our fire insurance rating, we were looking at a, another engine station out in that area, did that kind of go away? This was part of the Capital Project III out there, and I just wonder if that kind of died away. And I guess that's not a necessary investment now, and we don't know the answer now. We didn't check on it before the second reading.
No, we actually do know the answer, and the answer is no, we are no longer pursuing that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other comments from the audience? Comments from council? All right, this is first reading on an ordinance to rezone property at 449 Rutland Drive, the site of Aiken High School, from residential, single, to planned institutional. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you for being here tonight. We'll go back and pick up our agenda where we left off. This is number two under old business, is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. Ask staff for comment.
Mr. Mayor, the council has 10 pending appointments to fill vacancies to the various boards and committees. Mayor Osmond has recommended the reappointment of Nancy Dukes to the Board of Zoning Appeals. If appointed, Ms. Duke's term would expire December 1, 2017. For council consideration, is the reappointment of Nancy Dukes to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
All those in favor?
Need a motion?
We need a motion. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. All those in favor?
Wait a minute, got a comment.
Okay, absolutely.
Seems like I'm sabotaging you tonight.
Keeping me straight. Appreciate it.
Mr. City Manager, are we doing anything to revitalize the Parks Commission? I mean, that's been a non-functional commission for an awfully long time. I mean, I'm due an appointment, but my person was the chair, but they never met, they never did anything. Is somebody working to revitalize that?
I know that there has been some conversations. It might be a wonderful agenda item for the next administration of finance committee.
It certainly will. Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Are there any other names to be submitted for consideration for our next agenda? Here you go. Thank you. Moving down to number three under old business. This is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex five acres owned by William Putnam located on Owen Street, approve the concept plan, and zone the area planned residential. I'd like to entertain a motion to continue this, please, if we could.
Go move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to continue. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Number four under old business. This is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the 2015, 2016 budget to authorize borrowing funds to repair the roads in Gem Lake's Extension subdivision. Is there a motion?
Go move, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion and a second?
I second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Comments from staff?
We can go to a vote on that?
Very good. All right, all those in favor?
Just, we made the, we made the motion?
We made the motion and a second.
I did pass, give everyone a comment that Ron Feller had presented that I'd emailed to some of you as well with his comments on that issue, so hopefully if you'll take time to read it, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Yes.
My name is Ann Dix. I'm at 314 Junior High Street, Drive, Aiken, South Carolina. On this second reading to amend the budget for the repair of the roads at Gem Lake's Extension, I just would like to know, do you realize as a council that you are setting a precedence here for other communities or whoever may come in with problems of that? And that's all I want, that's all I want you to know, is that you're setting a precedent.
Very good point. Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Comments from council? All those in favor, raise your right hand. And that's unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Dix, for pointing that out and for the record.
Moving down to number five under old business. This is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving Crown Castle NG East LLC as a telecommunications service provider in the city of Aiken. Is there a motion?
Go move, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion. Thank you, Councilman Ebner. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. I think we have someone representing Crown Castle here tonight, perhaps?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Thank you for being here. There were just some questions that council members had at first reading, just a little bit about what was going on, so we were hoping you could kind of...
Yes, my name's Kimberly Adams. I represent Crown Castle. I reside at 512 Tomb Street, Palmetto, Georgia. Yes, I think there were questions. We did provide you some, quite a package of subsequent information, but basically it is a fiber optic telecommunications system, we are a license, sorry, certificate utility in the state of South Carolina. And basically what it is, is a fiber optic system with antennas that run through the fiber optic system back down to a traditional tower site. So we are not a carrier, but what we do provide is kind of offload of capacity or coverage to carriers when it then goes through the fiber optic system back to the traditional tower site. So we are a utility that can operate in the public right-of-way in South Carolina. So what this franchise agreement is to do is obviously allow us that access. I think there was a question about, will everything be underground? And yes, it will be. We will comply with the city's code on underground utilities.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, there's a bunch of questions. A lot of engineers, but I'm not one of them. As I look at your packet, it seems as though you build big towers and little towers.
Correct. Our parent corporation, Crown Castle International, is traditionally a tower company. We were actually an acquisition of another company... We were actually an acquisition of another company called NexG that is a small cell network, or DAS is what you may sometimes hear it referred to as a distributed antenna system.
And specifically, where do you plan to offer your services in the city of Aiken?
We are not exclusive to any particular location. The current network, I can give you its 10 node locations, so existing utility poles are what we generally try to attach to. And then, obviously, we'll be running the fiber optics underground.
So, is this something that AT&amp;T, or Verizon, or Atlantic Broadband would rent your lines?
Correct. Correct. It is being developed for, the current design is for one carrier specifically, but obviously, we're not exclusive to just one carrier. Once the network is in, we can also lease to other carriers.
Are you developing this initially for one carrier? Are you at liberty to say who that is?
Unfortunately, I'm not. But it is a major carrier.
And it will provide fiber optic services? Is that telephone, internet, TV?
Wireless predominantly. Now, obviously, once the fiber is in, you know, there is a potential to use that as enterprise-type fiber as well. But this current plan is for wireless offload.
And then, but you'll be digging wires throughout the city?
Along the public right-of-way, where we're connecting to backhaul it back to that tower location. But that's, you know, the city's requirement is it be underground, not aerial.
Okay, I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you for being here. It's nice to know who's coming to town.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you very much for being with us tonight. Any other comments from the audience? Comments from council? All those in favor? And that passes unanimous. Thank you. Six under old business. This is a second reading and a public hearing of an ordinance to approve the sale of 713 Vincent Avenue Northeast. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Mary, thanks for that. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, at the City Council's January 5th, 2015 meeting, we approved a resolution adopting a memorandum of understanding with the Second Baptist Development Corporation to apply for funding with the South Carolina State Housing and Development Authority's Neighborhood Improvement Program. The goal of the program is to stabilize property values through the demolition of blighted or unsafe properties. Seven properties were initially accepted into the program. We were recently informed that 713 Vincent Ave. Northeast in the Crosland Park now meets the eligibility standards for the program. We had a broker evaluation conducted, and the recommended sale price is $15,980. A city council approves this ordinance on first reading on February 8th. For city council consideration, a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving the sale of 713 Vincent Ave. Northeast to Second Baptist Development Corporation as part of the Neighborhood Improvement Program.
Comments from the audience? Comments from council?
Just emphasize that this is a neighborhood improvement project. Not so much a sale of a property, but it's a sale of a property for neighborhood improvement. I've had a couple of emails on it.
Very good. Any other comments?
I kind of have a question. How much more real estate do we own? Like, I'm trying to get out of the realty business. How much more do we have to get rid of?
There's a lot. I mean, I think, actually, I think Councilman Delores committee is looking at this.
There was a list of it out about two months ago of all the property, maybe three months ago.
We have a list that we're working on.
You can probably refer to it.
He's on the committee.
Yeah.
He's on a list. But we're pruning that list down so that we get to a point where there are properties that we can get rid of.
I saw the list, but the individual items were not identified as superfluous or not.
Yeah, no, that was hard. That's why Stuart's pruning that list down. And then, we've got to come up with a way of making those projects available for sale to get them back on the tax rolls and out of our hands as quickly as we can.
I'm not talking about this building. I'm talking about, like, Vincent Avenue or so forth.
We appreciate Second Baptist with their efforts through their redevelopment. Committee also working with us. Any other comments?
No, haven't.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to number seven under old business. This is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 06082015A to allocate funds for Aiken entry signs. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Mayor. I second.
We have a second. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, we have a request before you that you approved in first reading on February 8th, 2016. For city council approval, a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the budget, ordinance number 06082015A, to allocate funds for the Aiken entry signs. In your backup materials, you have a copy of the proposed sign layout for your consideration. And we do have PRT staff here if you have any questions.
Comments from the audience? From council?
Mayor, if I may. First question was whether this project had been put out to bid in determining what we were going to do with it, getting a price. Was it bid out?
Staff?
It will be. Okay. Just our normal process. And I was thinking it was already, since we had such a finite dollar figure on it, I was thinking it might already have been done. But secondly, and this is, as y'all know, I come from the Design Review Board, and I've tried to make a habit in that role of not trying to apply too much individual taste to my decisions and to try to be objective. But as I consider these signs, I'm just wondering, the signs are like so many other signs that you see all over, the entrance to the city signs, like you see all over the state of South Carolina. And you see them, the same signs, whether you're going into Graniteville, or whether you're going into New Ellington, or whether you're going anywhere else. And, you know, I've always viewed Aiken as a very unique city. And I wonder if there might be any opportunity to do something that might make these signs just a little more unique, a little different. And then, also, there's a question in my mind of whether, you know, once the sun goes down, you can't see them anymore. I don't know that, maybe some are lighted, but some aren't, or something. Maybe none are lighted. I don't know.
You used to have spotlights on them.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
We used to have spotlights on them. I don't know.
Do they have lights?
Jessica, you can, Jessica, if you'd like to come up.
And so, I mean, I hate, since we're in the 11th hour on this thing, I apologize for bringing this all up now, but it just has been stuck in my craw, thinking about it. And I'm wondering if there's anything we can do that would be a little more unique to Aiken as far as the entry signs, and then also something that might make it where they can be seen both during the day and at night. And, you know, again, it's the 11th hour, and for that, I apologize. But I just, I just can't get past it.
Present this to Planning Director Tommy Paradise at the time, and he did forward it to, I guess, the Design Review Board for a brief review. And they said they had no guidance.
One of the things, Councilmember Mary, that we could do, if this addresses your concern, is we could ask our Design Review Committee, even though they don't have jurisdiction, to provide some guidance or assistance in this matter. They have been very cooperative in areas outside of their jurisdiction, advised to them recently.
That would be great. You know, they certainly don't conflict with the guidelines. In other words, there's nothing about them that, as they're presented, and this is primarily a restoration project as much as it is anything, but there's nothing about them, as they're presented, that would make it conflict with the historic guidelines that the DRB has. But at the same time, just an opportunity to have a little bit of creativity, an opportunity to have something that might be a more signature element of entering Aiken. I mean, I certainly don't want to emulate Las Vegas, but everybody knows that when you're coming into Las Vegas, that Las Vegas sign. And I don't want anything near that. But the idea is something that says, Aiken, welcome to Aiken, in some way identifies Aiken as special. So, it's not the same sign you see when you go into Denmark, or Bamberg, or any other place.
You would like us to get pricing on adding lights, then, possibly?
Well, yeah, you know, I'd like to see some lighting, just so you can see at night. But then, I'm no sign expert, so I can't really come up with any great ideas as far as what that'll look like. But if there is some way to, in a simple fashion, make them a little more unique to Aiken, have a more Aiken signature to them, and just not a generic sign.
I'm not sure how she's going to take that, but do you not like the city of Aiken welcomes you?
It's not about disliking. It's about that it's...
Being unique.
It's just the same sign that you see in every community all over the state, which is fine. I mean, it's been that way for years. I'm just simply asking if there's any way that there can be input, you know, from folks to make it...
Councilwoman Mary, you're not wanting the structure of the sign to change, correct? Because right now, we're only talking about the face of it.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I mean, honestly, with the amount of money you're talking about, no, I don't think we can change the structure. But again, I'm no sign expert, but maybe if we had some ideas through the DRB, as Mr. Columbus suggested, or somewhere else, maybe we could see if there's any...
Let me make a suggestion on this. We're not under a time crunch to push this on.
We need to continue this, then.
I'd like to continue. I'd like for it to go to Development Committee. Can you work, can we work through them to come up with an idea that, and then we'll revisit this? I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember who made the motion and second, but we need to remove that and make a motion to continue.
I do. I made the motion.
No, I mean Development.
I've got a quick comment, though. These are substantial structures. These are substantial structures now. Annex places and so forth. What are we going to do when we go beyond the signs? Do we have to move the sign with the same expense again?
I couldn't hear what he said.
Pick it up with a dollar and move it out?
The question is, is if we annex beyond this point?
Do you have to move the sign?
We have to move the sign. I'd say at some point, we probably would.
I mean, the welcome sign is not an indication of the legal meets and bounds of the city. It's when you come into the state of South Carolina, the sign's not right on the boundary of South Carolina. It's some, you know, it's, so it depends on what our goal is. I think it's just to welcome folks, and I suppose if we so significantly annex in a certain direction at some point, we might want to change it. But this is simply a welcome sign.
And I, again, apologize for the late hour of this. And it is some, to some degree, very esoteric, what I'm talking about. You know, it's a matter of taste, and again, I prefaced everything by saying that it's hard to get in to start legislating or voting on taste. But just where there's some opportunity for other input and consideration, so that maybe if there is a way to make these more uniquely Aiken, we can at least see and hear what those might be. And in doing so, also consider the lighting possibility.
I'm going to recommend that we send this to the Development Committee. And if they make a recommendation to go to Design Review, that's fine. I mean, I'd rather, we're going to do it once, let's get it right. So, I'm going to say let's...
I would think that we also ought to set a time limit for this to come back to council. This has been up and down over the last couple of years. So, it would be good to set up two months or something and come back to council rather than six months or a year.
60 days.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Got it right, Jessica?
That's fine by me. Again, I'm... Can I have a motion to continue it and send it to?
I so oppose.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Continue.
Continue and send it to committee? Very good.
Thank you, Jessica.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jessica. Moving down to new business. Number one, this is approval of a resolution to update the city's fund balance policy. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
A motion and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Comment from staff?
Mr. Mayor, this is an effort on the part of our finance department to update our policies and procedures. In 1993, the City Council adopted a financial policy for the city of Aiken. As part of the new budget process, we would like to update the fund balance policy, which was adopted back in 1993. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board has changed the terminology for the components of fund balance, so we would like to update our policy to reflect the current terminology. You have an explanation in your agenda, and if you have any questions, our finance director is here to respond to those questions.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from the audience? Comments from council?
Yes, I have several questions.
I just invited Kim up because I knew we were going to ask her some questions.
Oh, yeah.
Kim, have you heard our finance director?
Go ahead.
Yes, this has always been one of my issues, of course. Before, we've been recommended by auditors that we have a six-month expenditure in the budget. Is this, is this on the way to six months or four months as a minimum we should have?
Auditors are talking about six months. That's their cash reserve. This is talking about fund balance, so it is different.
All right. It always comes up during the audit that we have, you know, the auditors will say, six months minimum budget, so you don't have to go borrow money. Is that related to this or not?
Well, it is related. If you have a good fund balance, then implied in that would be you'd have cash.
Yeah, the cash balance is what I'm always interested in. I need to see the green on that type. So, but this is related.
This is asking for the fund balance terminology to be updated. What we had in our policy from 1993 was made obsolete when the Government Accounting Standard Board changed their terminology. So, you'll remember a couple of years ago when we changed the way we categorized our fund balance. And that's all we're asking is to make our policy match what the Government Accounting Standard Board terminology is, and in that to add the percentages. And the unrestricted fund balance, which we're asking for four months, includes the unassigned fund balance, which we're asking for two months. And so, part of the restrictions in our fund balance are actually the money we set aside for our capital equipment replacement. So, if you look at our June 30th, financial statements are unassigned, which is, if you will, it's the freest money. It's what we have and what we want to build up our fund balance, so that bonding agencies will look at that and see us as favorable. And we're asking that that be at two months reserves. We're not quite there. We're a little bit shy of that, but we are working on building that up. And then, the unrestricted includes the assignments, and that's nearly $10 million, which exceeds the four months that were requested.
So, this brings us in line with national standards. And the significance of it is not only to update it with new terminology that's accepted nationally, but there's speculation, at least, that we may at some point enter the bond market. And when we do, it's very, very important for our bond rating that we have these types of policies in place.
Thank you. Clarify for me the use of unrestricted fund balance. Unrestricted means it's not assigned or designated to any category whatsoever?
That would be unassigned.
So, unassigned, from a finance perspective, is better than unrestricted? In the sense that unassigned, I can do anything I want with it?
Okay, I was going to say it's not better or good. It's just different. Unassigned is what you would consider surplus or a residual fund balance.
Okay.
And that's what we're trying to build up to, a two-month...
So, the bond rating agencies are most interested in our unassigned balance because it's free of all encumbrances. So, if a tornado hits us, if a hurricane hits us, if we have some other calamity, that's money that has no assignment, and it's the purest sense of reserve.
And where is all the money that we have, the Capital Project sales tax money? Where is that, and what category is that in?
This is talking about the general fund?
Yes.
The Capital Project sales tax is restricted because by virtue of the ordinance, the enabling legislation restricts that to what it can be spent on. So, that is restricted.
But sometimes, when we go to do a project, do we not move it into the general fund so that we can spend it? We don't?
Capital Project sales tax money. That has all been spent out of the funds where the money comes into.
All right, the O-16 and O-17. Okay. Thank you.
The other part, I assume our good tax that we've been talking about tonight is also restricted, and it's in an account by itself.
It is. It is in a fund by itself, and it is restricted for the uses that the legislation allows.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, questions from council? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous, thank you. Moving down to number two under new business. This is a first reading of an ordinance to amend the business license ordinance to adopt the new NAICS codes. Is there a motion?
Sub move, Mr. Mayor.
Second, sir.
We have a motion, seconds all over the house. This was, if I'm not mistaken, this went to your committee?
Yes, it did. It went to our committee, and we sent it forward with the recommendation for approval. I've since had a comment from a constituent regarding changing the date for our business licenses, and I think the city manager can add some comments.
I just wanted to make sure it goes...
The position on staff is that we appreciate the thoughtful comments that came in about the relevant dates. I think the purpose of the comments was to make this as least owners as possible to our business sector, which is certainly something we are in favor of. Our staff has been very involved statewide with the reforms and the business license laws, and we have been consistently told that the issue of the relevant dates are going to be part of an overall statewide reform package that's forthcoming in the very near future. And so, our staff is, while sensitive to the recommendation that was made, we would hate to change the dates and then have the state change the dates on us. And we think that there might be some legitimacy to waiting a few months to see what the municipal association of South Carolina...
So that's a near term.
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Did I state that correctly? Yeah.
Does that, what the state's doing, require legislative action, actual?
Yes.
I mean, that just moves at the pace of, you know, legislature's stuff.
All right. Thank you. Comments from the audience?
Jane Paige Thompson, 240 Knox Avenue. I think that if you could put the idea of having that due date be reviewed, if the legislature doesn't manage to get that political football passed down the field in time for their session to end, because when they hit signee die, we're done, and that's this year. So, so that you can revisit this before it becomes an issue again, because it will be, if it doesn't pass soon, like Councilman Mary said, it'll be another year before they actually bring it forward. So that's all I'm saying, is if the municipal association doesn't get the result that they're asking for, to move it to an April deadline, that the city council will make an effort to take that burden off of businesses and move it to October, if possible. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. That's a very good point. Before it comes back to us, we'll look at that. Any other comments from the audience? Any other comments from council? All those in favor, raise your hand. And that's unanimous, thank you. We've already dealt with number three under new business. We'll move to number four. This is acceptance of a grant award from FEMA, HMGP, for Wilcox Inn Soil Stabilization Project. Is there a motion?
Sub move, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Stephen.
We have a motion, we have a second. Comments from staff, excuse me?
Mr. Mayor, on August 11th, 2014, the city council approved the city proceeding with a full application to FEMA for several mitigation projects. This application process required our George Grinton, engineering and utilities director, to attend a benefits cost analysis workshop in West Columbia for four days. Mr. Grinton attended the workshop and submitted the application for several projects. We have received official notification that the city of Aiken was awarded a grant for the Wilcox Inn Soil Stabilization Project Phase One totaling $265,380. This is a 75-25 match. FEMA has split the original grant application into two phases. The first phase is being awarded so that the project can be evaluated on a geotechnical basis, designed and bid out to determine the construction costs for Phase Two. At the completion of Phase One project, we would inform FEMA of the construction costs of the successful bid, and FEMA would decide if we are able to receive that amount for Phase Two construction of the soil stabilization. The federal cost share of this Phase One grant is $199,035, and the local cost share is $66,345. The expectation of this grant is that the project will be implemented by March 15, 2018, which is three years from the date of the final funding of the original disaster declaration. For city council consideration, is acceptance of a FEMA grant for the Wilcox Inn Soil Stabilization Project Phase One totaling $265,380 with a 75-25 federal subrecipient share grant. We have Mr. Grinton here to answer any technical questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience?
I may comment. I talked to...
Comments or questions from council?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I speak for Mr. Ellis. I talked to him, he is out of town, and so he would be here, otherwise he is, would be here if he wasn't out of town.
Appreciate it.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. To our city manager, the, and maybe this goes to Mr. Grinton, the Phase One, $265,000, is there a similar amount for the completion? Is it just one total amount of $265,380?
Well, ask Mr. Grinton to come up and answer that.
The $265,000 is made up of project management, geotechnical studies, services to help, you know, define the project, to one, prove it's feasible, and we know it's feasible, but we don't know at what extent the cost is. This is a soil nail wall that will be put into the bank, which then we would build a facade in front of it that literally holds it in place, and it's anchored by some, well, the anchors are actually quite long, they'll go underneath the Wilcox Hotel itself. And then, it'll be sculpted and stained to actually look like the original bank that was constructed. This was a, the railroad lowering was a, I guess, it has not been registered by the historic registry, but is able to be. So, the state historic preservation office, you know, requires that you do something, you know, you don't put a concrete wall up, and this will actually increase the cost of the soil stabilization, but it's done for historical preservation reasons, and so FEMA provides for increased funding for situations like that. The money, the $265,000, if we don't spend it all, and some of it is for project management throughout the entire project, it will be allowed to be spent all the way to the end of the project, conclusion of the project.
So there's only a one-time $265,000?
Yes. What they did is they divided, the total grant that we applied for was $1,875,000, and this is the portion that would define the scope of the construction.
Okay. The second, we would share, split the cost between the Wilcox, the 66, 30, half? Do we fund that whole amount?
The discussion about funding when Roger was the city manager and we were, you know, presenting this, didn't really get to that...
Level?
...level of discussion. The city, you know, for the FEMA grant, it requires, you know, an entity that, you know, FEMA believes will come up with the money.
Right.
And so, we certified it, it's signed by the city manager, and after, you know, we were authorized by council to go after it. And so, that's where it stands, so that does need to be resolved.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask a couple of questions?
Councilman Mayor?
All right. So, of the $265,380 is Phase One, and our share of that $265,380 is $66,000.
Correct.
That's coming from the city.
Correct.
Is that paid from, where are those funds coming from?
That's what I was asking.
That's...
The good tax.
That was, that was mine.
I mean, it is, it is, you know, we're, this is a defensive move for, you know, a very well worldwide known, you know, asset.
Yeah, I understand the why, I'm just asking, figuring out the how.
Oh, that was not resolved when...
And this being the first step of a $1.8 million project, by doing Phase One and accepting federal dollars, are we basically committing to the balance of that $1.8 million project?
FEMA is also not committing to giving us the construction cost.
So we may do this and get, and go no further?
That's correct.
Whether it's our choice or theirs?
That's correct.
Okay. Does this in any way, shape, or form address the stormwater issues going into the, near the Wilcox?
No, that's a separate project, and we're, we have an RFP out to do a design, something very similar to what this phase is, to select a contractor to help us specify, design, and build a specification for bidding out construction and correction of that stormwater issue.
Is the rail line involved in all this?
They have...
Have they been approached about, you know, if they do start work, do you have permission to work on their line?
Yes, they provided us with a letter of support, and they have told us that, you know, they would help, you know, allow us to have our construction people on site, that sort of thing. There's enough erosion that has occurred that we could create a lay-down area and a work area, and then we would just work cooperatively with the Aiken Railroad Company. They provided us with a letter of support. That was actually one of the things we needed for the FEMA grant, because FEMA wants to know that, you know, you've, you've got all the potential red lights turned to green.
Is there, am I, is there CPST money for the stormwater problem going, where the stormwater's going into the railroad cut?
No, there's not. That is the reason why, last year, we asked for an increase in the rate for the stormwater, and that was based on the amount of work that we had identified at that time, and that's one of the projects that we were...
Well, I've got some thoughts on that, but that's a conversation for a different day. But, so we don't know where the $66,000 specifically would come from for this.
No, that's all right.
And this ultimately is only gonna tell us, we got no real...
Will tell us is how much it will cost to complete the actual construction work of saving, you know, the bank so that the Wilcox Inn can stay open.
I don't mean this in any way insulting or anything, but does that, the $265,000 seem like a lot to just figure out what it's gonna cost to actually do work?
The, we won't spend all of that, that amount of money. The way they had the grant, you have certain categories, so they just pick the categories that apply. For example, project management is a portion of that, and I don't remember the exact number, but if it was $90,000 or $100,000, we might spend $25,000 of that total. So, we do not expect to pay for, to spend the whole $265,000. We would, in all likelihood, spend it through the entire project if we are awarded a Phase Two. We will only spend the amount that we need to spend.
George, thank you. I think there's, is there a time limit that if we, if we continue this, would it, will it affect the application?
I don't think it will. They're anxious to get started. In fact, they've already called me and want to set up a meeting to have a grant project management kickoff. South Carolina Emergency Management Department comes in, and they talk about, you know, the rules and this, that, and the other, so that they can get started.
We're gonna refer or continue this to the next, next meeting.
Can we, can we vote on that? I don't think we need to continue it. I think we need to, we need to do it.
We don't, we don't know where the funds are coming from that were, that were matching with...
Yeah, we heard the good things we just talked about.
Well, my bit of hesitation, and this is good for this project. George, do you feel that we have the full picture of what it's going to require, whether this is going to be enough money? Somehow, I feel like there's something that's missing in terms of whether, what we will run into unexpected things. Do you, we have a handle on that?
Well, that's why I think FEMA decided that they wanted to do a Phase One, Phase Two. They were not sure themselves, like you are, if, you know, almost $1.9 million would be enough or would be too much. And awarding the engineering and the geotechnical evaluation so that you can come up with specifications and do an actual bid, so you can come up with defined cost, before they would, you know, grant the next one. It's possible that the next phase might be $1 million or $2 million. If it was $2 million, then they might not approve it. If it's a $1 million project, then they, they probably will.
George, thank you. Thank you for that. And speaking with the city manager, I think his recommendation to us would be to continue this to the next meeting, to get these questions answered for the funding.
Who is gonna come, if we continue it, which I would support, what are we going to come back with? I think staff and these...
I mean, I will certainly give direction that we, that we have a funding source and a little more clarity in this, as it comes forward to us.
I think this started actually back in 2010, and when we had a windstorm through here that did some damage, and part of the property fell in then. And then, the ice storm kind of pushed it into the realm of the, of federal assistance in that, otherwise, we wouldn't be getting that.
Sure.
And this took the city, the county, the state, as well as Congressman Joe Wilson's help to get this far. So just knowing this is, you know, it's been a lot of background work over the last five years, haven't it?
We're almost there.
Was there a sense, if we continue, we put the grant at risk?
Well, I've got a question, which is a little bit more...
Can I just ask a question? I'm sorry.
I don't have the...
There's nothing that has been discussed with me that anything is at risk.
Okay.
I'm officially asking you to postpone this to the next meeting.
I agree.
I'm kind of curious, just procedurally, who's going to be the project manager? Is FEMA gonna give us money, and the project manager is gonna work for the city engineering department? Or are they gonna be like an independent agency, working directly for FEMA, cost accounting?
No.
If the money comes into the city, you know, we need to have project codes to pay the people doing the evaluations and the engineering pre-work. And I'm just kind of wondering, are we ready to do that?
George.
George, can you respond?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were still there.
I just wanted to let, if we hire a project manager, the project manager will report to the city. It'll be, we are the sub-grant receiver of the grant, so we'd be responsible, and we're accountable for everything, so they would work for us.
So we got a, we got a check for $1,000,000, and we administer that money as well as the project?
Yes, with the exception that we have to pay it first, and then they reimburse us when they say that we've paid correctly for the, you know, what they're allowed to do.
Yeah, okay. But still, it's the same thing.
Same way they did on the ice storm. We pay it and they reimburse it. I simply make a note that I appreciate and agree with the city manager on continuing it, but I think what Mr. Ebner said is true. It's no small thing, the work that's gone ahead, you know, on this in advance of tonight, but I agree that it ought to be continued.
Okay. Is there a motion to continue?
Sub move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor, continue. Thank you for that. That's unanimous. Moving down to new business number five. This is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of an easement for sewer and storm, sewer and storm sewer line. This project is between Beatty Lane and Oak Grove Road. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Of a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Comment from staff?
Mr. Mayor, I know that all of you are familiar with this project. We have been negotiating and had received a verbal agreement for an easement, and then we now have that commitment in writing. So we are ready to go ahead, and George can answer any questions that you may have.
Comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council? And George, I know there's gonna be some, so if you don't mind making your way back up here. if you don't mind making your way back up here.
Let him start sitting right there.
I think one of the requirements that we need to implement, and I'm doing this as a suggestion, the group of businesses that are on the whiskey roadside, we're requiring a $20,000, if you will, funding to help pay for any of this. And I would think that in some point in time, when Mr. Haven's property is developed or whatever happened to it, we should do the same thing for individual properties there that are joined to pay for this. So I think this is obviously an economic expansion issue. So I think we need to, I think something in here to that effect would help the future, because it may be five years, 10 years, or 20 years. And so that's what I put out for discussion, and that would be that we include that people who join on to this line, whether it be sewer or stormwater, would pay a $20,000 fee, because we already have that in contracts with the other businesses along there. And that would reimburse us over time.
All right. Any other comments from council? Might get off easy, George. All those in favor?
All right.
That's unanimous. Thank you, George. Appreciate that. Moving down to number five, petitions and requests. Number one is a request to enter into a lease-to-purchase agreement for 902 Alfred Street Northeast. I think staff just needs direction from us to bring forward an ordinance. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
I think I can give direction to bring that forward to the way to the next meeting.
And the concept is, and I know individual counselors have supported this concept, but to rent homes that we own to public safety officers, and this is really creative, because this has a component to allow the individual to ultimately purchase the home. So I think it's good for the neighborhood. It's good for us. We take a home that is vacant now and put it into productive use.
It is, Mr. City Manager, but we've started with one, and we're now going up to, what, five? And it seems as though, rather than being temporary leases, they all seem to turn into permanent, because nobody wants to throw anybody out. I mean, these are the least likely people that you'd want to put out on the street. But we continue to make agreements that it's gonna be a lease for a certain period of time, but a certain period of time just seems to go on and on. So is it our intent, is the intent of this application to go a year and then bring it back to council if the person is not able to finance the house and buy it?
Yes.
Well, it serves dual purposes, too, Mike, because we have a public safety officer living in Crossland Park, which is what we need.
Sure.
And we have only to look at Chesterfield North. We had a number of break-ins, and after we had an officer under the same agreement at Chesterfield North, moved in and rented, and then he eventually bought the home. But crime just went away, whereas the chief wasn't in his job at that time. But crime went away in that little area at Chesterfield North. So it serves a great purpose.
If you have direction.
Very good.
Counsel, thank you for that. Moving down for items of information, I have three things I'd like to say. First of all, it certainly has, it's been reported, and everybody's been updated, I think, on the closing of the bridges that occurred last week with SEDOT. I wanted to just publicly thank Senator Tom Young Jr. for doing a great job of keeping all the council members and us informed of what's going on with that. We spoke to him about even being here tonight. I mean, he said we'll probably be towards the end of the week before. He has maybe some timelines, but he's gonna get that out with his email and certainly calling through us, and we'll do everything we can to keep everybody abreast of what's going on with SEDOT on our bridges. But I did want, I would say publicly how much I appreciate his calls and efforts on that, as well as the rest of the delegation. Second, tomorrow night is February 23rd. At the Crossroads Church, we're having a Government to Your Neighborhood meeting with the Crossland Park community. Crossroads Church is the old church, the old River of Life. Certainly, it's been an invitation to council members as well, but the community's looking forward to us coming to address them. Staff will be there as well. Looking forward to an opportunity to share with them, but also listen to concerns and move forward, making progress in that community and neighborhood. And Councilwoman Diggs will look forward to being there with you on that.
Could you give us some time and date on that?
It's gonna be seven o'clock. It's tomorrow evening at seven o'clock, and if anyone can make it, that would be terrific. I think it would be appreciated. Thirdly, and lastly, I just want to wish happy birthday to Councilman Mary.
Yeah, I've told a few people that if I hadn't invited this many people to my party, nobody would have shown up. It's the only way for me to get a lot of people to come to my party.
That's true.
Where's the cake at?
Right. You know the rules.
Cakes in my house.
If it's your birthday, you have to bring the cake.
This is a BYOC meeting.
I didn't know that rule.
The question I have is, I got kind of lost reading that proclamation. I believe the BAR wanted to have permission to put yellow ribbons on south boundary.
Yeah, that was in the packet.
Live oak trees, et cetera.
I restated.
X to Y, and that's approved.
Absolutely. You read it as it was, and I restated it in the motion, so thank you for that, because that's the right.
And Mr. Mayor, I would just add that we need to express appreciation to Senator Nikki Setzler and John Hardy, who is a commissioner for our area.
Yes.
They're getting very much involved in the bridge issue as well. Phil Johnson has done a great job in keeping up the speed on it, so.
Agreed. Thank you.
I think it's a shining moment for the city. We're certainly moving quickly on that.
Absolutely. Any other comments for the.
No.
There a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, please stand up.